Welcome, I'd like to call the call to order the November 2nd City of LaPorte Common Council Meeting to Order. If we could begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kineszny.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we'd certainly like to welcome, on behalf of all of us in the City of LaPorte for your commitment, Councilwoman Laura Kineszny on her first meeting this evening, so welcome.
Well, good evening, thank you very much, it's both an honor and a pleasure to join the council and I hope to do what we're proud, thank you Mayor.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthum.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus. Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway.
He's dead, by the way.
Okay, Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Here.
All present.
You're all present, Roger, if you could unmute. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Council Galloway.
We've got November 2nd as the meeting, I think this is the 16th.
I apologize.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, it is November 16th. Mr. Otis, do I need to change that?
Uh, no, Your Honor, you can just mark it as, uh, the 16th.
Thank you. So, because we are on Zoom, we will take petitions and comments from the citizens throughout the meeting, um, but currently, do we have any on Facebook Live?
No comments yet.
Great. Standing Committee reports, and again with Councilwoman Kineszny just being on here, everyone else, we obviously expect that you haven't had a chance to participate so far, but everyone else, Councilwoman Cutler? I think you're on mute.
Oh, I'm not, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, nothing to report, thank you.
Councilwoman West.
Uh, the Fire Merritt Commission met on Wednesday, November 4th, and I'm happy to report the Board of Works approved the purchase of a rescue boat, which will be stationed at Station 3 during the off-water months, and then docked on the floating docks on Pine Lake during the water months, which are April through October. They will also keep the smaller boat for the smaller lake rescues. They will meet again on Wednesday, December 2nd at 6:30.
I apologize. Councilman Vincent.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, the Plan Commission met on Tuesday, November 10th. There was discussion to make an amendment to an ordinance to increase the mobile permit fees for daily and weekly fees, which would make the daily fees would be $20, the weekly fees would be 50, yearly fees would be 500. Also, there's a discussion of a sign ordinance to clean up and limit new signs in our city. Businesses that are no longer in business will be required to remove their signage, which I am really happy about. Um, temporary signings will be limited as well, so we don't have a lot of temporary signs being put up all over the city. And for any murals to be painted and application will need to be filled out through the city. And the next Plan Commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 8th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Councilman Vincent.
Uh, nothing to report?
Councilman Frankie?
Yeah, the Police Commission met, uh, last Tuesday at the 10th, and congratulations to recently promoted Corporals Matt Drangmeister and Chase Muleman. Aside from that, they discussed a new promotion strategy, which, um, is in the works, they're not sure if they're gonna go with it or not, but, um, it is being discussed, basically, it would include an interview process with the Commission. We'll see what happens there, and, um, they, uh, changed the physical agility test for new hires to meet the exit strategy, um, standards, and that was passed. And then the School Board met on the 9th. Uh, the budget was approved, COVID was discussed, and, um, you know, they're continuing to roll with the state plan, we're currently at Orange, we'll see what happens on Wednesday. The Redevelopment Commission will meet Wednesday, this Wednesday. Um, it will be online on Zoom, the public can watch on Facebook or YouTube.
Councilman Galloway.
Um, on behalf of the Mayor's Veterans Committee and the VFW Post 1130, we would think, like to thank all involved with the program they had for Veterans Day. I know it wasn't just a sit-down like we normally have, I know there was a lot of work to it, but Mayor and Tim and anybody else involved, we'd like to thank you.
Thank you, that was a great program, Doom and Media, you did a great job bringing everybody together, so, uh, we've had great compliments there.
It was a pleasure putting it all together.
Councilwoman Ficus?
Uh, the only thing that I have to report is that Park Board will be meeting this Wednesday via Zoom at 4:00 PM.
And then I know we've had a transition between former Councilwoman Brown and Councilwoman Kineszny, that, uh, and I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add, but I know in December you'll begin, uh, sharing any committee report information.
And it's correct.
Great, so now we'll move to Tom Casey, our City Planner, to go through tax abatement, compliance forms, obviously this is a unique time, uh, Tom Casey.
Thank you Mayor, uh, Council, Council, um, what you have in front of you is a packet, which includes the annual compliance form for six different companies in LaPorte that get a, that get a ta- tax abatement based on a 10-year period. Uh, the start date for each of their agreements is in the resolution number, for instance, Montisol started in 2012, you can see they're in the ninth year of their tax abatement agreement. Uh, these have all been reviewed and approved by Brian Shook at SEH, a third-party analyst who did, um, uh, did go through all of them and found, um, all the companies to be in compliance or doing their best to stay in compliance with their goals. Uh, you'll need to make a motion for each respective abatement that they receive. Some are receiving real property abatements, uh, and personal property abatements, or one or the other. So, uh, you have a summary in front of you, you have all the background information, including the CF1s, the CF1s will need to be signed by the council if, if, if it's approved. There's also a motion attached to each respective company. So, I can, um, simply go through each one, however, however you'd like me to, to, to proceed, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
We'll go through each one and have questions for each one. Before we begin, real and personal property, just for anybody new to this, if you want to give a, real is structure, personal is equipment, um, so, any questions as a new council, please don't hesitate to ask. Uh, so I may first have a motion to approve for Montisol.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Just sort of a motion and a second discussion regarding Montisol, I think Mr. Galloway wanted to speak not only to Montisol, but all the companies.
Yes, um, this COVID has got everybody messed up, and we see where they're laying off some people now, but that's due to COVID. Um, it's not due to these companies' faults, um, they have very good records, I looked through all of them, this ain't the first time I've been through them, and, uh, so what's happening now, they're laying off people, uh, it's, it's not their fault, they're all doing good, they're doing the best they can. And I think without this COVID thing, you would probably even see things higher than what they are. So I just, just want to say I approve of everything that's going on here with these companies.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none?
I'm sorry Mayor, can I, um, when they, when the council makes the motion, they need to make the motion, um, on the last page that was provided to them based on one of those four criteria, so that needs to be included in the motion.
Can we amend the?
In, and I, if I can add, in the case of Montisol, you're only approving a motion for the real property tax deduction, not the personal property tax, tax deduction.
So, Councilwoman Ficus, could you amend the motion?
As pertains to Montisol, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
So, do we have a amended motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Wind Machine? Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, as pertains to Wind Machine Incorporated, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none? Sorry?
I think every, every one of these that I look through, like, that were presented tonight, have, like, I think exceeded everything, they're, they're above the employment, they're above the wages, and I think this is really good, especially during this time.
Oh, I agree, and I just wanted to double-check with Tom Casey, and can you guys hear me okay, I was having some trouble early with my mic, okay. Um, uh, do you, Tom Casey, do you feel that any of these that you want to point out has any, um, reason beyond the taxpayers' control or not substantial compliance? Because I felt the same way, I would've said substantial for each. Is there anything you need to bring to our attention?
No, in fact, in my discussions with Brian after his review and after my review, the one that came up was B&amp;B Manufacturing, because there was a, quite a big, bit, big difference in the actual salaries versus the employment. And I spoke with Rick Talbert this afternoon, actually, just to clarify that, and he said that it was mainly due to the, the, the cost of, so their, their, um, businesses doubled since they entered into the tax abatement in 2015. The cost of keeping the employees trained, the cost of the overhead for the employees has increased along with the additional business, so that was their, their reason for having that increased salary, so, uh, no, I did not see anyone that was not in compliance, uh, especially when you look at the, you know, you really need to consider the term of the tax abatement. If it's a 10-year period and they're in year five, they could even be down and still be in compliance, because they could be picking it up, or it could've just been one bad year, like Roger suggested, that being in a pandemic, uh, we should give them the benefit of the doubt, especially if they're in midstream, so.
I have a question regarding B&amp;B, what's part of their abatement based on employment numbers? Or is it, is it on salaries?
Councilman, can we wait till we get to B&amp;B?
Yeah.
Let's, I have, I do have a motion and a second for Wind Machine, are there any other, uh, discussions regarding Wind? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Also, Mayor, I'm sorry, we voted on Montisol's real property, but I don't know that we voted on personal property?
Um, Courtney, I clarified that earlier, they do not, they take the easy tax credit, they do not need to...
Oh, got it, so I have two in my packet, sorry.
Yeah, I, 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 X, uh, made a mistake, it had two motions put in the packet.
Okay, all right. Gotcha.
So Jaeger Unitec, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, as pertains to Jaeger Unitec Sealing Solutions, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Do I have a second? I have a mo- motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. B&amp;B Manufacturing?
As it pertains to B&amp;B Manufacturing, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, Councilman Frankie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if the abatement is based on the number of employees in addition to, uh, the financial amount?
Bert, do you think you can answer that question, because I don't...
Yeah, abs- absolutely, so our, in, in this, uh, um, our incentives are based on the capital investment, while the number of employees is a criteria we look at as to whether or not the incentive is warranted, the, the actual incentive and therefore the amount of the incentive are not, um, uh, impacted by the employment, it's just a criteria for the decision. The, the actual value of the incentive is created by the property taxes associated with either the equipment, which is the personal property, or the real property, which is the structure.
And, and Bert, if you could clarify too, and I kind of alluded to it earlier, it is over the 10-year period, the targets that you're trying to hit, correct, so?
Right, so, you, you have to always keep in mind, and, and, you know, when we talk to you, uh, the council, about compliance, uh, each year, that, you know, it'd be very difficult if you asked me what I'm going to be doing 10 years from now, uh, I would struggle mightily to, to give you an accurate, uh, answer. Now, we're asking these companies to project out what they're going to be doing in that 10-year time period, and so, there's always going to be some deviation, because we're just not that good, so, you know, we may think, a company may think that a piece of equipment that they're gonna purchase in a couple of years is gonna cost $2 million, when a lot may change in our economy, and maybe that only costs a million dollars, that's not their fault that they're not spending that money, they're, they're still complying with, um, their promises that they made when we approved the incentive, to the best of their ability, and that's why you get those four criteria, uh, to use to apply this, because it would be very difficult for us to say either yes, they 100% met whatever they, they suggested, or, or not.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Homet Casting and Services?
Your Honor, as pertains to Homet Casting and Services, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven, uh, and I just would like to add, considering what Homet has had to go through with COVID and the airline industry and so forth, it's amazing, some of the numbers that have been put out there, and we're obviously fortunate to have them and these other companies in our community. American Licorice?
Your Honor, as per...
Go ahead.
As pertains to American Licorice Company, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilman Galloway, second and final reading.
Your Honor, I'd like to, uh, read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in, or discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
An ordinance prohibiting new or replacement water wells within city limits.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, pass.
Second.
I have a motion to, um, pass and a second discussion, and I would like to put, Bert Cook, if you want to add to this, uh, and just give a reminder briefer on why we're doing this.
Yeah, thank you Mayor, um, so, we, at our last meeting, we read this ordinance, uh, for the first time. Uh, just to remind you, this is a, uh, Tim Warner was on, and, and we had talked about how, um, wells are typically not allowed in the city limits, but we're u- utilizing an ordinance at the county level that right now prohibits that, uh, and so we were, we are considering, uh, an ordinance that would give us control at the city level. In advance of that, we have a project that's moving forward that would like this, uh, the ordinance that you see in front of you right now passed, in order to give them the protections that they need, that there aren't going to be no wells, um, put in, uh, surrounding their property, and so, we'd like to move forward with this ordinance now, and, and, and again, I suggested that you'll probably see another ordinance from us more generally for the rest of the city, um, in short order, but we don't have that in front of you yet.
So I do have a motion and a second further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Ficus?
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus?
An ordinance amending section 94-322 and 94-326 of the Municipal Code of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, Abbey Lane and Central William Court.
Do I have a motion to approve? No move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Councilwoman Ficus, would you like to remind everybody on this, please?
And this is just out in the Whistrey Meadows subdivision, um, yield signs were put up prior, the subdivision has grown, and the neighbors now think that it's time for stop finding neighbors, it really is, because it's getting very busy, and we're doing the, actually, the, um, the ordinance then following this one is being proactive with the streets that are gonna be, um, in phase seven, so that we don't have to come back and bring it to council.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Ficus?
Your Honor, I'm to read an ordinance by, uh, for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus?
An ordinance amending section 94-322 of the Municipal Code of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, placing stop signs on Katie Lane, Josh Lane, Josh Circle, Allison Lane and Dean Court.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilman Fight, or Frankie?
Your Honor, I move to do a second and final reading of an ordinance by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, or discussion, or, I'm sorry, motion passes seven zero, go ahead.
An ordinance adding section 94-238, prohibited parking 10:00 PM to sunrise, Monday through Sunday, Lake Shore Drive along Stone Lake.
Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Approve.
Second.
Have a second? Did I hear a second in there?
Second.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second, uh, discussion? Councilman Frankie, if you just want to elaborate?
Yeah, basically, um, for protection of the residents nearby, and, uh, in order to keep, keep the park, uh, in line with the rest of park regulations, parking will not be prohibited from 10:00 PM until sunrise.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Kineszny?
Your Honor, I move to read a resolution in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in, or discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Kineszny?
A resolution to provide for reimbursement of public health and public safety payroll costs with CARES Act funding. Whereas the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, is seeking reimbursement of public health and public safety payroll costs as allowed through the federal CARES Act funding, which has been received by the City of LaPorte from the Indiana Finance Authority, and whereas there has been designated by the City of LaPorte a CARES Act grant fund through which such reimbursements are received, and whereas the payroll expenditure activity for public health and public safety payroll costs shall be captured in the CARES Act grant fund by transferring the expenditures from the fund from which the expenditures were originally made, and whereas, in light of the governor's public health emergency, an alternative process is being implemented to transfer all or a portion as determined appropriate by the governing body of LaPorte of reimbursed federal CARES Act monies that are specific to public health and/or public safety payroll costs into the general fund, and whereas the process contemplated herein is intended to allow for maximum usage of these funds. Now, therefore, now, therefore, be it resolved that a common council of City of LaPorte hereby establishes the following process in order to utilize CARES Act funding to properly pay the public health and public safety payroll costs. Number one, the CARES Act reimbursement for public health and public safety payroll shall be received into the City of LaPorte CARES Act Fund. And number two, thereafter, the original payroll expenditure shall be transferred from the general fire salary appropriation to the CARES Act Fund. And number three, the council shall be provided the transfer resolution detailing the new appropriation transfers before December 31st, 2020. This resolution shall be in full force and affect immediately upon adoption. All acts necessary to cure up this resolution are hereby ratified. Passed and approved by the Common Council of City of LaPorte, Indiana, this day of 2020.
So, this is the first reading, uh, Clerk Treasurer Parthum, would you like to add anything to this?
This is just, uh, a resolution that we have to put in place in order to capture the rest of the funds that were allotted for the City of LaPorte. I can tell you it's around $673,000, we want to make sure that we capture all of that, so that we can then disperse it as we see fit, as the end of the year is coming to, quickly, to, um, to a close, we want to make sure that we've got those funds up here and in our, what, what, for us to spend at the City of LaPorte, and this allows us to do just that.
So this is a resolution, we can pass it this evening, um, do I have a motion to approve? No move.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Councilwoman Cutler?
Your Honor, can we hear okay, um, I had someone sending me a message, she couldn't hear me, can you hear okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Your Honor, I move to introduce an ordinance I read for the first time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and discussion, or a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, uh, seven zero, Councilwoman Cutler?
An ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 4-2020 to establish responsible bidding practice and submission requirements for submitting bids to perform construction work on public works projects. Whereas the City of LaPorte desires to repeal and replace ordinance number 4-2020 dated February 3rd, 2020, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, as follows. Ordinance number 4-2020 dated February 3rd, 2020 is hereby appealed and replaced with the following. Whereas the City of LaPorte, City, is required by law to award capital improvement contracts to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Whereas the City, based upon its experience, has determined that quality workmanship, efficient operation, safety, and timely completion of projects requires all bidders meet certain minimum requirements in order to be a responsive and responsible bidder. Whereas applicable state law also requires that bidders meet certain minimum requirements in order to be a responsive and responsible bidder. Whereas the City seeks to enhance its ability to identify responsive and responsible bidders on all city public works construction projects by institution of more comprehensive submission, submission requirements, which are in compliance with Indiana state law. Whereas the Responsible Bidding Practice and Submission Requirements ordinance will preserve administrative resources by ensuring that only qualified contractors and subcontractors are awarded contracts on public works construction projects. And whereas the Responsible Bidding Practice and Submission Requirements ordinance will assure... And whereas the responsible bidding practice and submission requirements ordinance will assure efficient use of taxpayer dollars, will promote public safety and is in the public interest. And whereas the responsible bidding practices and submission requirements ordinance will help ensure that no contractor awarded work under this ordinance or any subcontractor at any tier working on a project awarded pursuant to this ordinance engages in payroll fraud, including the misclassification of employees as independent contractors to avoid paying state, federal or local payroll taxes, worker compensation insurance, unemployment insurance premiums, and failing to pay overtime and wages as required by law. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana. And just to note, city there is a typo. Section one, this ordinance, which is entitled responsible bidding practices and submission requirements for submitting bids to perform construction work on public works projects is hereby enacted and shall read as follow. One, bid submission requirements. Contractors proposing to submit bids on any city project is estimated to be at least one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more must in order to be considered a responsible bidder prior to the opening of bids, submit a statement made under oath and subject to perjury laws on a form designated by the city and must include A, a copy of a printout of the Indiana Secretary of State's online records for the bidder dated within sixty days of the submission of said document, showing that the bidder is in existence current with the Indiana Secretary of State Business Entity Reports and eligible for a certificate of good standing. If the bidder is an individual, sole proprietor or partnership, this subsection shall not apply. B, a list identifying all former business names. C, any determinations by a court or governmental agency for violations of federal, state or local laws, including but not limited to violations of contracting or antitrust laws, tax or licensing laws, environmental laws, the Occupational Safety and Health Act, OSHA, or federal Davis Bacon and related acts. D, a statement on staffing capabilities including labor sources. E, evidence of participation in apprenticeship, apprenticeship training programs applicable to the work to be performed on the project, which are approved by and registered with the United States Department of Labor Office of Apprenticeship or its successor organization. And evidence that any applicable apprenticeship program has graduated at least five apprentices in each of the past five years. For each of the construction crafts the bidder will perform on the project. Evidence of graduation rates are not required for apprenticeable crafts dedicated exclusively to the transportation of material and equipment to and from the public works project. The required evidence includes but is not limited to a copy of all applicable apprenticeship standards and apprenticeship agreements for any apprentice who will perform work on the public works project. And documentation for each applicable apprenticeship program clarifying that has graduated at least five apprentices in each of the past five years, for each construction craft the bidder will perform on the project, additional evidence of participation and graduation requirements may be requested by the city at its discretion. F, a copy of a written plan for employee drug testing that covers all employees of the bidder who will perform work on the public works project and meets or exceeds the requirement set forth in Indiana Code four dash thirteen dash eighteen dash five or Indiana Code four dash thirteen dash eighteen dash six. G, the name and description of the management experience of each of the bidder's project managers and superintendents that bidder intends to assign to work on the project. H, proof of any professional or trade license required by law for any trade or specialty area in which bidder is seeking a contract award and disclosure of any suspension or revocation within the previous five years of any professional or trade license held by the company or any director, office or manager employed by the bidder. I, evidence that the bidder is utilizing surety company in the United States Department of Treasury listing of approved sureties. J, the written statement of any federal, state or local tax liens or tax delinquencies owed to any federal, state or local taxing body in the last five years. K, a statement that individuals who, who will perform work on the public works project on behalf of the bidder will be properly classified as either an employee or an independent contractor under all applicable state and federal laws and local ordinances. L, a list of projects of similar size and scope of work that the bidder has performed in the state of Indiana within three years prior to the date in which the bid is due. And M, for contracts estimated to cost at least three hundred thousand dollars, certification that the bidder and all subcontractors are qualified under Indiana Code four dash thirteen point six dash four or Indiana Code eight dash twenty-three dash ten. N, a written list that discloses the name, address and type of work for each subcontractor bidding bidder intends to employ on any part of the public works project, including individuals performing work as independent contractors. The city reserves the right to request supplemental information from the bidder, additional verification, any of the information provided by the bidder and may conduct random inquiries of the bidder's current and prior customers. Failure to provide requested supplemental information within either seven calendar days or other amount of time specified by the city may result in a bid being considered unresponsive. And two, post bid submissions for subcontractors. Each subcontract of any tier shall be required to adhere to the requirements of section one of this ordinance. But subcontractors shall submit the required information to the successful bidder who shall then submit said information to the city prior to the subcontractor's first day of work on the public works project. Failure of a subcontractor to submit the required information shall not disqualify the successful bidder from performing work on the project and shall not constitute a contractual default or breach by the successful bidder. However, payment shall be withheld from any subcontractor who fails to timely submit said information until such information is submitted and approved by the city. Additionally, the city may require the successful bidder and or relevant subcontractor to remove a subcontractor from the project and replace it with a responsive and responsible subcontractor. The disclosure of a subcontract by a bidder or subcontractor shall not create any rights in the disclosed subcontract. Thus, a bidder and or a subcontractor may substitute another subcontractor for a disclosed subcontractor by giving the city written notice of the name, address and type of work the substitute subcontractor will perform. The substitute subcontractor is subject to all of the obligations of a subcontractor under this ordinance. Three, validity of prequalification classification. Upon designation by the city that a bidder's or subcontractor's submission is completely and timely, complete and timely, and upon any further consideration deemed necessary by the city, the bidder or subcontractor may be prequalified for future city public works projects. Prequalification shall exempt the bidder or subcontractor from the comprehensive submission requirements contained herein for a period of twelve months. Therefore, bidders or subcontractors who are prequalified must submit a complete application for continuation of prequalified standing on a form provided by the city, i.e. short form, by December thirty first for the upcoming calendar year. Failure by any prequalified bidder or subcontractor timely submit its complete application for continuation of prequalified standing shall result in automatic removal of the designation effective January one of the upcoming year. However, the removed bidder or subcontractor shall still be permitted to bid on or perform work on city public works projects. Any material changes to a contractor's status at any time must be reported in writing within ten days of its occurrence to the city. The prequalification designation is solely within the discretion of the city and the city specifically reserves the right to change or revoke the designation for a stated written reason. Denial of prequalification shall be in writing and shall be forwarded to the contractor within seven working days of such decision. Any contractor denied or losing prequalification status may request reconsideration of decision by submitting such requests in writing to the city within five business days of receipt of notice of denial. Four, incomplete submissions by bidders. It is the sole responsibility of the bidder to comply with all submission requirements herein, no later than the public bid opening. Submissions deemed inadequate, incomplete or untimely by the city may result in the automatic disqualification of the bid. Five, response and responsible bidder determination. After its review of complete and timely submissions, taking into account all information in the submission requirements, the city shall in its sole discretion determine whether a bidder or subcontract is responsive and responsible. The city reserves the right to utilize all information provided in the bidder or subcontractor's submission or any information obtained by the city through its own independent verification of the information provided. Six, certified payroll. For projects in which the cost is at least one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the successful bidder and all subcontractors working on a public works project shall, shall submit a certified payroll report utilizing federal form W H three four seven or its success form, which must be prepared on a weekly basis and submitted to the city within ten calendar days after the end of each week in which the successful bidder or subcontractor formed on the public works project. Certified payroll reports shall identify the job title and craft of each employee on the project. Journeyman, electrician, apprentice, electrician. In the event any successful bidder or subcontractor uses independent contractors to perform work on the project, such individuals must be identified on the federal form W H dash three four seven or success form with the same information as it is required for employees. The city may withhold payment due for work performed by a successful bidder or subcontractor for failure to timely submit the responsive certified payroll reports until such time as the reports are submitted. The city shall not withhold payment to a successful bidder or subcontractor for failure of the successful bidder or one or more other subcontractors to timely submit their certified payroll reports. Seven, public records. All information submitted by a bidder or a subcontractor pursuant to this ordinance, including certified payrolls, are public records subject to review pursuant to the Indiana Access to Public Records Law, Indiana Code five dash fourteen dash three. Eight, penalties for false deceptive or fraudulent statements and information. Any bidder or subcontract that willfully makes or willfully causes to be made a false deceptive or fraudulent statement or willfully submits false deceptive or fraudulent information in connection with any submission made to the city shall be disqualified from bidding or working on all city projects for a period of three years. Nine, conflicting ordinances. Any ordinance or provision of any ordinance in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance is hereby repealed. And ten, severability. Any provision of this ordinance is found to be invalid, the remaining provision of this ordinance shall not be affected by such a determination, such provision shall, shall remain in full force and effect. Section two, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of the board relating to the passage of this ordinance were adopted in open meetings of the board and that all deliberations of the board and its committees that resulted in such formal actions were meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements and that the reading and adoption of this ordinance complies with the city code as amended. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after date of adoption by the city council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana. End of ordinance.
Great work, Councilwoman Cutler. Usually don't we try to give that to the new council person?
Uh, gave it to the wrong Laura, gave it to the wrong Laura.
All right, uh, because that's long, uh, if I could ask Bert Cook to maybe simplify what we're doing here. We passed an R B O soon after, uh, our administration got into office in twenty twenty. Can you give a little breakdown of what we're doing here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, you know, first, I'll start by saying, uh, Bert Cook, executive director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. You know, the, the mayor, uh, as soon as his administration took over and a lot of credit to him and to the council, you've been, uh, I think, great, uh, supporters of making sure that the economic development projects that are going on in our community are, uh, are being built by local people wherever possible. And, and I think that's a, uh, you know, it's been a major goal and we've done a great job with that so far. So we passed, uh, an R B O in February. Uh, I'd like to think that we're the type of community that continues to, uh, evolve and is flexible with, with things. And as new information comes to the table, we're able to act on that and to act appropriately. So the ordinance that you see in front of you would replace our previous ordinance. Um, and this is a model that's being used across the state of Indiana. It's got some different language that, that helps tighten up the, the ordinance itself and make sure that we're giving our local people the best opportunity to, uh, to build the projects that are occurring in their community and our community. And, uh, and so there's, there's a lot of similarities to the previous ordinance for, for those of you that remember reading through that one. Uh, but there are some differences, there's some changes on the apprenticeship side and a few other things that, uh, that ultimately, everything is, is designed for the same, uh, goal. And that is to have, uh, safe projects during construction with experts that are building projects that will ultimately be safe once they're built and those projects are in, in, uh, we give ourselves the best opportunity for those projects to be built by local people within our community.
And Nick Otis, you feel comfortable that this is fair to all though bidding?
Yeah, so we went through, uh, on the, uh, Lakeside Sewer Project, went through, uh, kind of an issue with the lowest bidder. They had done the proper training but had not submitted it. And, uh, we just want to make sure it gets all submitted in a timely manner. But at the same time, allowing us, the city, and, uh, to go back to contractors if, if something is miscellaneous items missed, for example.
Any discussion from the council? Again, this is our first reading, so, um...
One, one question, Mayor, I know I'll ask Nick Minnick, uh, is, I think, you know, part of that draft provided that weekly payroll would be provided to the city. I just want to confirm whether that's too often for his department. You, you certainly don't want to overburden our department with keeping records as well, so.
Okay, we'll, we can verify that. Do we have anybody here to speak on behalf, uh, from the public? I think John Carr with the Carpenters, I see is here. John, would you like to add anything?
Um, sure, uh, my name's John Carr. I am, uh, with the Carpenters Union and the president of the LaPorte Stark and Plastite Building Trades. Uh, but, uh, basically the only change is this is kind of just beefing up the apprenticeship language. Um, you know, our building trades affiliates works with all the local, uh, high school building trades programs. And we have a, a good pipeline coming from the building trades, uh, classes into our affiliates programs. And it just, uh, help ensures that, uh, it, it defines the responsive, uh, bidder. Um, so it, uh, just ensures that everybody working on the project's going to be properly trained and, uh, have an apprenticeship program. And, uh, it's gonna, uh, further enhance our, our local building trades programs, um, on some of these local city projects. So it's, it's basically a win-win for all, uh, protects the city and promotes apprenticeship programs, which is, uh, something that, uh, you know, is, is gaining in popularity, popularity, um, amongst our local high schools.
Anybody else from, uh, public?
Mayor, I'd like to speak if I may, Marcella Kunstak.
Marcella? State your name and address.
Uh, Marcella Kunstak, two six five four South, four hundred East, LaPorte, Indiana.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening and support you on the, uh, responsible bidder ordinance. I work currently for the Indiana Illinois and Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. We're a labor management organization established to promote, support and encourage fair contracting. And the city of LaPorte is a fantastic role model for just that. I am here to support the responsible bidder ordinance and support you for, and thank you for your consideration. Uh, myself and the many Gold Star contractors that, uh, live here and pay taxes here appreciate the city's continued support. Adoption of this ordinance promotes local workers and allows our tax dollars to recirculate back into the community by utilizing local workers and local contractors. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Discussion questions from the council? Hearing none, we will move this then to the December, I can't believe I'm saying that, but the December council meeting. We'll move on now to other business. Is there any other business from the council? I do want to take a minute and thank all of you for your support, uh, of the recent executive order as numbers are rising, uh, quickly in LaPorte County in the state with COVID and to take the restrictions necessary to try to flatten the curve. Uh, I certainly appreciate that. Uh, good news is Jeff Bachelor with Code Enforcement was out first thing this morning and, uh, went from Walmart across and, uh, saw, uh, early on from Walmart and Al's, as packed as, as they were, only one person did not have a mask on. So, uh, people are taking it serious. You know, this is not a political issue, it's a safety issue, uh, not only helping other people, but more and more data is coming out that it will help and protect you and each of us as well, uh, with the vaccines, uh, that are coming out, data that's coming out, you know. Uh, light is at the end of the tunnel, it might be midway through, uh, second quarter of twenty twenty-one. Uh, if we can just do the necessary things in the meantime to keep our economy going and keep the healthcare system from over, uh, overwhelming it. Uh, so thank you to each of you for supporting that. Any other questions, thoughts, anything on other business?
Bill Bears?
Oh, this is a considered short meeting over the last few ones. Uh, Mr. Otis, I don't see any statements or questions from the public?
No, no, nothing on social media.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, we are adjourned. Have a great night.
Thank you.